Join me in the pledge, please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, liberty and justice for all.
All right, good evening to everyone. Welcome to the April thirteenth, twenty twenty-one special meeting. We got a few items on the agenda. First one is item A, Eastern Shipbuilding update. Mr. Hammond?
Continuing on our discussions individually with you, we are proceeding with trying to get an application together maybe for next month for triump and looking at other funding alternatives. We have a tentative as of this afternoon, gotten the okay for a tax exempt bond under certain specifications with the county maintaining ownership, which saves a lot of money on that deal. They have one hundred and fifty-one employees on site as of last week. This particular deal that we're negotiating would be two hundred and fifteen permanent employees indefinitely. So I'll keep the board members updated and hopefully we'll have a comprehensive proposal at the at the end of the month meeting.
Okay, all right.
Any questions on?
Any questions, Commissioners, from Mr. Hammond? Any questions? All right, no sir.
All right, next item is the prison update. One we need to send letters to Representative Shoff who hosted the meeting and Senator Osley who fought as hard as I could have fought to keep us open. And again, I have seen the legislation that would add to the bill at conference that that no prison in a physically constrained county that is the largest employer in that county could be closed. So if and when that bill is filed, that should take us off the chopping block. Again, we had a most of you there. We had a very good meeting with the secretary. He gave us a lot of time. The senator and the representative gave us time until they had to go to the Florida camp. But overall, with the work camp getting mothballed and not torn down is a positive thing, that it's not permanent necessarily. We're still working on the work crews and I'm gonna let Mark give a little update on that. We've had discussions privately with the Division District One folks and with the secretary present about us potentially getting some folks. But again, we haven't had regular work crew folks in four or five months and it's been sporadic at that. So Mark's had some discussions. I'll let him get a little update on that.
All right, afternoon Commissioners. So as of Monday, I talked to the lieutenant at the camp and the word from y'all's meeting on Thursday hadn't passed down through the ranks yet. But good to know that today he called me and told me that that information had reached him. So the conversation that y'all had has come down through the communication chain and Gulf CI understands where we're at. They had a issue on Monday. They didn't let inmates go out. Tuesday, they reserved for COVID shots for convicts carrying over into tomorrow. Thursday, we should get three crews of at least five convicts per crew. And so what we're gonna do, we're gonna rearrange our guys that are certified to keep that three crew running five days a week. So Monday through Friday, we should have three correctional officers we can send up there to pick up at least fifteen convicts. So that that's a great plus to where we've been.
Thanks, sir.
And part of ours, and I don't think any of you heard this discussion, but because we will be having a different, I don't really say classification, but I guess classification is the word, we're going to, we may not be able to use your specific work crew supervisor because they're not as qualified. So we have several employees that were former DOC certified folks. And again, we're gonna be handling inmates for the most part that that could only be handled by DOC certified individuals, which they pulled them all across the state. They pulled them all in. So we may have to work around your specific folks. And I know it's gonna be inconvenient because they know your districts, but we're gonna try to get the most bang for our buck. And again, Mark's gonna be moving them around in the districts. I mean, it's grass cutting time and we are busy. So an extremely good positive from going from zero, absolutely nothing, zero, to we're just gonna have to go a little further to pick them up. But again, everything about that meeting so far has come to fruition. They didn't tell us any stories. So I feel much more comfortable that we're off the ledge and where we were, number one, to get closed. Again, do y'all, y'all good with sending the letters? If couldn't have a motion because the chairman needs to send that.
All right, I get a motion that we send the letters to Senator Osley and Representative Shoff.
So move.
All right, motion by Commissioner Daniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience on this? Anyone in the audience? All right, any opposition to that motion? Motion passes five and oh.
We'll say also that we got a good lobbyist and we've got a good state representative and senator because out of all the other counties, we're the only one that met privately with the secretary. The rest of them met on the Zoom call. So and we met before they did. So that probably helped our situation too. Next issue, I'm gonna let the county attorney handle this for the most part. I didn't see anything in the meeting. This, again, I don't think it'll ever come to fruition because it's crappy land. But at the end of the day, we always get the short end of the stick on these things. All of it's gonna dump out on our road in a very congested area that is a substandard road at best if this comes to fruition. And again, we have to deal with problems. So on item C, I apologize. The biggest problem is not necessarily the density. It is the wetland credit. So if we, you know, when we met with the mayor and he said he was gonna take that back, it didn't, it never got voted on. But if they'd agreed to the county density and the county wetland transfer, which is one to five, they could get about eighty-eight units on that property, the way we figured. Now they get somewhere between three hundred and fifty and five hundred units on that property. There's no way Tenth Street can take that traffic, even if some of them come up north. They're all gonna wind up on Monument, excuse me, on Garrison. But the problem is, the first eight hundred feet of that road coming from that entrance is ours and it's substandard and it's, you know, will be a consistent problem. This is your last opportunity to pump the brakes. And again, and I like most everybody, but again, we saw what happened in Highland View. We had the opportunity to object. They heard all the people in this room and it was eighty to one against the development. And they said, too bad, you live in Highland View, you can't vote against it. We're gonna do it. So if the board's gonna stop this train, it's gotta stop it now. Because we have about ten days left to file, if you're gonna file. So.
Commissioners, I think you all heard me at the workshop. We've had discussions on it. I've met with each of you individually. I've discussed the merits of the claim. And as the administrator said, your window under the statute is running out. So if there is a will of the board to challenge that, adopt that annexation and the challenges that are available to you under Florida statute, then we would have to file. So I'll need an authorizing vote to do so. I'll be happy to answer questions of the commission with regards to that argument.
All right, thank you, sir. All right, Commissioners, questions, concerns, reference to the annexation, City of Port St. Joe? Any questions, Concern?
Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir. Go ahead.
Thank you, sir. Just leaving the workshop. And we were more or less told, we're gonna annex. There's nothing you can do about it, you know. And mainly it was about densities too. The county, we have only, what is it, four? Per acre, all right. And the city can go up, I don't know what they can go up, whatever they wanna go up to, I guess. But what scares me about this whole thing, same thing happens up in the area where I live up in Weewee, the city up there, they hopscotch all around. And the next thing you know, somebody will be, they'll be annexed a fifty-foot lot on Cape San Blas. We have two on the gulf side, three on the, no, two on the bay side, three on the gulf side, and they'll put fifty on a fifty-foot lot. It's gotta stop. It's just gotta stop this hopscotching around. Now this over here where it's at is mainly wetlands. There's a little ridge in there. But I don't know, do we have any other subdivision in this community up to five hundred? How big is Windmark? Nowhere close. What about, what is it, Berry Dunes? Nowhere close.
Berry Dunes was limited to one hundred ninety-nine because of the DRI. Now Windmark Phase One is less, but they did a DRI for Windmark. It's fifteen hundred units on twenty-five hundred acres of property. But
Twenty-five hundred?
It triggered a DRI. That's correct.
But I'm just gonna voice my opinion. I think it's time to put a stop to this hopscotching around annexing in property. And over there, I just don't see it putting it in there. There's no way in and no way out other than this one street right over here. You know, you gotta get power in there. You gotta get a water sewer at, plus got paved roads in there. You got a, what, a half, twelve hundred feet of very sensitive wetlands. How you gonna get across that? Thank you, Ms. Chairman.
All right, thanks, sir. Anyone else?
Fuck up, Ms. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
At the end of the day, I hate to see the city and the county have to result litigation. I, and there's never a good outcome. But I see the mayors here. I tried my best to work a compromise, I thought, in that workshop. And I mean, even up to this point, I'd be willing, I can't speak to the rest of the board. I mean, I myself would do, I would do, I'd agree to eight units per acre instead of four. But, you know, I can't do fifteen at the end of the day. I, I just, you know, I hate to see the city and the county getting litigation. It just never ends well. And, and, and we're all, we're all, we're all here. We all live here, you know. And I just, that's my thoughts.
Thanks, sir. Anybody else? Yes, sir. Yes.
I thought it was, you know, I'm glad that you guys met earlier and you're gonna do this quarter, every quarter. You and the mayor, I think that's a good idea, Ms. Chairman. Because I think we do need to get along at the end of the day. I mean, we all should have the same goals, which is take care of the people of Gulf County and the city. But I'm, you know, I just think the density deal, I mean, it's, to go that big, like same thing happened to Butler project, brought that up earlier. You know, it's causing us issues. But and at the end of the day, I don't know that they're gonna, the people that, you know, that are gonna be backed up to this thing are gonna, they're gonna raise sand about it too. And they do that. I know with the Butler deal, they said, well, they can't, they didn't, you know, give it any, you know, teeth really. And this place was packed. And there's a lot of folks. So at the end of the day, I mean, we do need to get along. But I mean, I think this density is a, is a deal breaker for me, anyway.
All right, more Commissioners? All right, like, I just wanna echo, like Commissioner Macron said, I mean, we, we can, hopefully we can. And I, and I know they said that we can negotiate or talk about density later, but we lose that opportunity here in the next ten days. And once it's, once it's gone, it's gone. You know what I'm saying? So like I say, I, I, I thought we, you know, we was gonna go back to the, to the board and then we was gonna, and then they was gonna vote on something from, I thought we agreed upon one to eight, but I guess I might have, I mean, I thought we would get agreed upon something. But I knew it wasn't fifteen. So like I said, at the end of the day, I hate to see us go back and forth with, with the mayor and with the city officials. Because like I said, we all here for one cause and that's for, for the people. And but, I mean, at the end of the day, it is what it is. If we, if we got, if we, we're gonna lose that opportunity. But if we can come back and negotiate and talk about how many acres, how many, I mean, we'll go for, then I think we need to do that before we lose our opportunity to, to challenge it. So those are my thoughts on that issue. All right, Mr. Novak, what else, what you need from us?
I have no further comment other from the workshop. I know that we had discussed it. And I think one comment from the city was that they did not want to be held hostage by a suit. And the only comment I would have to that is this is your only opportunity to evaluate and examine the issue. You've asked the questions over the last three months with regards to this annexation. You've asked the staff questions. You've asked myself as the attorney questions. And then during the workshop today, you asked questions. And if the commission doesn't have those answers, this is one remedy that you hopefully can explore to stop the annexation. You're limited in your challenges to it under the statute. There's no tremendous amount of challenges that you can put out there. There's some procedural issues that you can challenge. And then with regards to statute and the merit of creating an enclave. But again, it's limited in your challenges from a county's perspective in a municipal annexation. But like I said, I don't have the answers that you've asked with regards to that annexation and the future and the growth. I know Michael spoke to it as well. So this certainly is up to you. But you are limited in your time in which you can take any action with regards to it.
All right, thanks, sir. And let me, let me say one thing too. Because I don't want to spin this and say, oh, the county versus city and the county doesn't want affordable housing. No, that is, that is not it. This is a density issue that we're dealing with. This has nothing to do with affordable housing because we want affordable housing to come to, to come to Gulf County. But what we don't want is to see that property and three hundred units on so many acres over there. Because just like I say, it's gonna, it's gonna be a nightmare. And at the end of the day, if I was living, and let's, let's go back because city brought this up also. They talked about, what's the housing development? Paces.
Pace Family.
Well, what's the name of that place?
Gateway.
Gateway, Gateway. So we talked about Gateway. And we had issues with, with Gateway that we tried, that we tried to address in reference to Gateway. And we knew it was gonna be a nightmare from the, from the, from day one with the road and, and the issue. And like I said, and now we stuck with a, with an issue, with a traffic problem. And like I said, we gotta figure out another way to help those people out, to get them in and out of that place. Because like I said, it added extra trips. And if we don't figure out, or not to us, but if the city don't figure out how to deal with that traffic, and let's say they go to, we go to court, and let's say they do, they win it, and let's say they do move forward with three hundred units in there. It's gonna be an issue. And like, just like Gateway, it's, it's an issue with the, with the, with the coming in and leaving out. Because I get calls multiple times, especially on that road that goes right in. Oh, they speeding up and down my road. They speeding up and down. You don't wanna believe the calls I get. And I understand Commissioner Hoffman probably getting some of the same phone calls in reference to that, that road. And that, what, if you take, and Gateway, how many units that is?
Sixty-eight, I think, first phase. I don't, does anybody know?
We sunk five hundred fifty thousand into it. It's supposed to be affordable housing for working folks. And if you work, you can't live in that. We found that out. So that's low income housing. We need workforce housing.
All right.
Which is what we're gonna be doing up seventy-one with it. And hopefully this can become workforce housing.
Right. So like I say, it's, it's gonna be, it's gonna be an issue that, that they're gonna have to figure out. Like I said, we, we want workforce, workforce housing. We want affordable housing for the people. But like I say, it's a density issue that the county, that we can't agree on, agree upon at this time. So that, that's my, any more Commissioners on this? All right, Mr. Hammond, what's your recommendation?
I don't get a vote. My orders from the board is to oppose any annexations that aren't mutually agreed on by the city. We were with City of Port St. Joe. So this is your last opportunity to stop this annexation. And again, I, I see the arguments. The county attorney and I've talked about it a lot. I think it's a very challenging piece of property for the city to develop. We did sit down with the mayor and the manager. I got more educated than I was with that meeting. But it still has to come through their yard onto our road. And it's still massively, gonna be massively disruptive. So again, it's the last opportunity to, to challenge it. Again, it is city-owned property. Some of it that they've owned for a long time, some of it that St. Joe gave them in, in the two thousand and five range trading for, for, for potential land. It was not very valuable, in my opinion. But if you also take the argument that if anything owned by the city can be annexed, then Dow Keith can be annexed because they own property all the way to the Chipola River. And again, that's not where it's gonna go. It's the city limits signs at Pine Street at St. Joe Beach. Developers are gonna wanna continue to expand. And again, y'all lived through the nightmare of Butler. There's nobody on the city commission. I don't think there's anybody on the city staff that was there when that was done. But the city, except for Mayor Buzette, who was not on the board at that time, would have done the same thing in Highland View at the old school site, had we not challenged it and the developer backed out. So again, we don't want high density. The public doesn't want high density. And if you're gonna stop high density, which includes, remember, most of this is wetland. We don't agree on the amount of wetland, but it's more than half wet. City gives full credit for the wetland density where the county would give one to five. So you're gonna cluster this on the Upland Ridge. So you're not gonna be building single-family houses if you're anywhere close to three hundred units or four hundred units, whatnot. It's gonna be multifamily gateway-type development. That's the only way you're gonna get anywhere near that many units. Because out of this fifty acres, I think about ten is up. They say about twenty's up. But either way, you divide twenty into three hundred, it's a lot of units per acre. So that's my recommendation.
All right, Mr. Novak?
I just want to offer to the Commissioners, you all weren't here, but there was a joint project between the city and the county a few years back. And I wanted to offer it to you all. During your workshop, they, we talked about all the questions you all had. Funding, infrastructure, timelines, state agencies, how you're gonna cooperatively work to get this project done, the city is. There's another project the city and the county had. And you pledged almost a million dollars to help them with the Tenth Street ball field. And Chairman, you headed up that subcommittee. If you recall, before any actions were taken, you pledged the money. But the next twenty-four months, you had multiple public hearings, lots of workshops, all kinds of volunteer input. You had engineering reports. But you met over fifteen times, I believe, over the course of two years to try to get those answers for the public. And you invited everyone there to try to flush out those issues. And I heard you today, and I've heard you the last two months, you're asking questions for all these things. But the annexation would be the back end of that. So you would get all these answers and that way you could get behind it. And I think they asked you for your support. They asked you for financial commitments today as well. But for you to have those answers that you could make a decision not to challenge an annexation, I don't know that you got them. I do know that the, the one finite issue today is that you have a limited time in which you can challenge it. And I've offered each of you individually my comments with regards to the challenges to an annexation. There's strong arguments, ones in the past. And there's ones like Michael just said, that they own this property. They have historically owned this property. It is near the city versus other annexations in the past. But it's the approach, and I think we've talked about it, which was you wanted answers. You don't have those answers, but you wanna support the project. But today, you heard the comment of you need to trust it. And I think the concern that you've expressed was to trust it, but you not maybe in control of the project in the future. And the city today commented, there's two different issues. There's the annexation and there's the density. And, but they go one hand in hand. Because right now, this is county property. They adopted an ordinance on the twenty-third of March and the time is clicking. So it was in the county. They've made the ordinance adoption to bring it into the city. But you have one opportunity to challenge that procedurally. And that's what you have ten days left to do. But again, it's the answers. Me, as your attorney, I would hope that you'd have a lot more of those answers and go through the due diligence and the feasibility that you did on something as simple as the Tenth Street Park. I think they wanted to add two ball fields that you all got behind two or three years ago. And you proceeded to have a year and a half of hearings and public input and a lot of local leaders involved in that to try to figure out the funding before you can make those final decisions. Ultimately, you all got sued along with the city and the project fell apart. But again, that was the participation to put some ball fields in. And now we're, we're here talking about the annexation today before you have any of the other answers. And that's why I had mentioned to you during the workshop, was it an opportunity to pump the brakes when you mayor, when you met with the mayor and Jim and Michael participated with you? Was there an opportunity for you all to take a step back? They said that you're gonna meet again in three months and have a workshop to talk about future density issues. That does nothing for you on this project. And did nothing for you on the project on Butler Bay Road that none of you had control over. But you did inherit that problem and we're dealing with it right now. So I just offer that and I'll take any direction you provide to us.
Ms. Chairman, let me, could I be recognized?
Yes, sir.
Thank you. Thank you. I wanna address the administrators.
Yes, sir.
Please, Mr. Hammond, prior to this annexation, did anyone with the city sit down and talk with you, discuss any, their plans out there, what they were gonna do or anything? The only thing I knew, the next thing I knew, we were getting, this piece of property was getting annexed in. But did anybody sit down prior and give, lay any type of groundwork down?
Not prior to this starting. I, I got served a paper that said they were annexing it. And then we got one delivered by, I think, the Charlotte. But
But no one had the courtesy to come and talk with you?
And I won't say it's
I know, no one sought with me on it.
I, I think that the city's mindset, and I, if I was representing them, I might have the same. But the city's mindset is it's city property. We can do what we want to with it. And that's their prerogative. But it's in the county today. And if we don't object to it till our thirty days runs out, then it will be in the city. And then we have no say in what happens with density. And, and of course, we don't care about zoning. We just care about number of units. But no, sir, no prior discussion with me. And, and I don't think they felt like they needed to.
Okay.
Right, wrong, or indifferent.
Thank you. All right.
That's all.
More questions, Commissioners? All right, what's the wishes of the board?
Ms. Chairman, I have a motion on the floor that we challenge this annexation.
All right, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel. Second. Second by Commissioner Rich.
Discussion.
Yes, sir. You got the floor.
I said, well, I gotta see the mayor here. This is one last time, mayor. I, I tried to work a compromise earlier today. And you know, I fell about density. And, you know, even at fifteen units you're looking at per acre, you're looking at three hundred and something units on the backside of those circles and, and Twentieth Street. And, and I, I just really wish we could work a compromise. I'm gonna leave it at that.
Okay. All right, I got a motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion? All right, anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? All right, no one in the public? You got something, Commissioner?
Yes, sir. Ms. Chairman, if there's any motion that would authorize the chairman to sign the resolution authorizing the county staff to take those legal steps. So if you can include that in the motion, I'll prepare the resolution, give it to Leanna after today. But give the chairman the authority to sign that resolution as well.
All right, you good with that?
Include it in the motion.
All right, got you. You good, your second stance, Mr. Rich?
Yes, sir.
Well, uh, once you, anyone in the public on this issue? Anyone? All right. Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes five and oh.
Ms. Chairman, item D, water system update on Cape Lighthouse Water. Mr. Butler, he here, he gives a quick update.
Uh, Michael, why, Mr. Butler's passing out something. Probably get some clarification on that, that boil water notice also that, that went out and it was kinda, they thought it was the city of Port St. Joe also. I got calls on it, so.
Well, and Commissioner Macron called me. It was sent in as the Lighthouse Utilities Water, Gulf County's water system. And one of the news agencies, I don't remember which one off the top of my head, had all of Gulf County, which I don't know how that could possibly be when you have at least three different water systems. And then the other one had it right. And then I went on the website, one of them had it right, one of them had it wrong. So we called them. I think Mark called them, Clay called them. And it took them a while to get it straight.
Okay.
Again, it's, Gulf County does own that water system, but it's not all of the water in Gulf County. And I, and I don't know how that happened, but I don't think it was on our end.
All right, well, I'm gonna send the news agency a bill because I got a guy called me last night. He said, uh, is, are we on a boil water notice? I was like, no, man, not in, no, not in the city. He said, well, man, my wife was telling me that we're on a boil water notice. And I went out and bought fifteen things of, of water. I said, well, sir, I'm sorry to tell you, we're not on a boil water notice. So we'll send that bill to the, the news station. All right, Mr. Butler, you got the floor?
Yeah, thank you, Ms. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
On the boil water notice, we, we had worked up the, the notice to go to the media, to DEP, to radio, to TV, to the health department. And we know at least Channel thirteen took what we gave them and did not go by the header that was, that was written. They elaborated a little bit, a little bit more and said, oh, Gulf County. And that created a firestorm. And it was not part of the notice. It was just at the, at that level. Ms. Commissioner, before I give you, here's a, just some highlights of water system.
Yes, sir.
And some of these are just points. So if we go through, you understand where it is. Lucy one, that's the new well site. Also Lucy one is the oldest well site of the three areas that we, we work in. Lucy two is the money by you well. That's the largest well. That's sixteen-inch well. Lucy three is on St. Joe Peninsula. That's a holding tank, not a well there. Just a two hundred thousand-plus gallon holding tank. Water system has an excess of two thousand customers. Since one December, we have added thirty-six customers to the system. And talking with Jack a little bit earlier, we probably have ten or twelve more in the harbor to be approved for, for taps. And that's not even talking about the hotel that's going online. That's got about fifty-plus units in it. The Lucy one well, new well, seven hundred feet deep. And, and we have, we have a good well. It, well, when pump not running, the water is within about ten-foot gray level or ground level. So yeah, plenty of water in it, seven hundred feet deep. The pump is down at two hundred and fifty feet. When the pump is running, it draws it down about a hundred and seventy-five, which is a good sign for a well. It's, it's a good producing well. It's got a forty-horse pump at, at two hundred and fifty-foot level. Once we started the two service pumps last week, it's like Friday, Thursday or Friday, there's two service pumps. there's two service pumps at Lucy one, and we started those, and got one going, and then got a second one going eventually, it's been about three years since they've been run, and we noticed the pumps over at Lucy two had money by you, one kicked off later, and the second one kicked off. First time those pumps kicked off in over three years. That was the only well used for Lighthouse Utilities for over three years. And now, now there's two wells. Friday, at Lucy one, we was holding 65 pound pressure, at Lucy two was holding 60 pound pressure. I'm gonna say this, this is important, the next, top of the next page, there's bugs that gotta be worked out in all three sites. All three have been renovated to some degree, and today I had a, Kenny Strange came by and we sat down, we had a good conversation, he's down there now, working on Lucy one, we got some pressure control problems there, put a new bladder tank in, and new controls, and he brought his calibration equipment down, he's gonna calibrate those two off and on, to get it working right. And when it, probably is when it's not working right, the chlorine not working right, because when it, when it's not on, there's too much chlorine goes in, and when it's running, maybe not enough chlorine goes in. So he's calibrating that, and he told me, he said, may not get it today, but by tomorrow afternoon, you have that done. And also on Lucy three, the holding tank out on the Cape, we got an issue there with the pumps, and he should have those running, by putting some relays in place, he can put relays in place at both Lucy one and Lucy three. And on this time delayed relay, should solve a lot of our problems. And the system's running now, it's running better, certainly better than the last three years, because it was not running. But we have our two service pumps at Lucy one running, and like I say, when they run, that gives Lucy two a break, and so that's a good thing. The Lucy three holding tank is, is holding 200,000 gallons of water for the first time in over three years. That tank was sitting there empty for over three years, and now it's got 200,000 plus gallons of water, which steps out in the pressure, in the flow, and it's invaluable in a fire flow situation, where you need, when you got a house burning, you need water. The plan, and I haven't talked to the boss man about somebody thing I want to say here, but the plan is, ahead of us, this is a, an upgrade for Lucy one, and a little bit on two and three. The plan is on Lucy three, to put some inline pumps in place, north of the stump hole, and that was especially about during the time that 200,000 gallon tank is being filled. Today, when they call for water to fill the tank, it dumps 500 gallons a minute in the tank, 500 gallons a minute, people out, in houses need at that point in time. But the plan is to, to remove the valve, the fill valve, and put in a smart valve, and the smart valve will, it'll be able to detect pressure upstream and downstream, it will limit the flow to the tank, and, and we shouldn't have, when you put 500 gallons a minute in that big tank on the Cape, it depletes everybody's precious south of that point, and on up to the bay of dunes. But the plan is to put that in place, and a generator, and not, you know, we lose power, we don't have any power out there, and put a generator in place, it's gonna be pretty expensive, Water Management District has already told us they would contribute a pretty good chunk of money toward this project. We made a request last week for inclusion in the next cycle of funding from DEP, which will be in August, and hopefully, hopefully most of that will be grant money, it'll be grant loan combination. And what that'll do, that, hopefully that'll coincide with the time DEP upgrade to State Park, and they're gonna put more RV sites and more camp sites in the State Park, and hopefully they'll be able to take a shower, when they get that in, and that'd be about a year down the road. And it's gonna take probably a year down the road to get this, this upgrade done. So, that northern extremity should really see a big change when we get this two inline pumps going to Lucy three, and we have a hydro tank there, and this last week, a week before last, had to put a new compressor on it, and you have a release valve on it, and got it going. So, last thing on the last page, last month, we treated and sold 6 and 1/2 million gallons of water. We read meters Friday, and we read meters, and this last month, we sold, treated and sold 11 and 1/2 million gallons. So that's 5 million gallons the difference in one month, that's spring breakers, filling up swim pools, at that time of year, it's here, and this number's gonna last through summer. Historically, you go back and look at the charts on this, but the system's good, and we got a good well. We, some other things we gotta do, some things that were not in the specs when the upgrade was made, future upgrade would be the one at Lucy three, with the inline pumps. Mr. Hammond has got plans for a future upgrade from the, for the Jones Homestead area from White City, you know, that's in the works, and that'll probably be a year and a half down the road, to be realistic about it. But I think overall, we got a good system, it is not flawless, still bugs in it, and one by one, we're gonna work those bugs out, we're getting them worked out. One thing Kenny's doing right now, he's working some electrical bugs out. Is there any kind of questions on it?
All right, any questions from Mr. Butler?
Before you start, Mr. Chairman?
Oh, I'm sorry, go ahead.
A couple. Don, I've had some calls mainly on the boil water, and any idea when we can see that taking off?
I think Josh, Josh is here, he may be able to help us out, when, when that may come off. We had to put, we had to put the boil water, and typically a boil water notice is you gotta break in a line, somebody broke a main or something, and you got groundwater in your line. This case, it wasn't any of that, we have a brand new system, and we had piping from the well to the holding tank, from holding tank over to the service pump, that hadn't been tested bacteriological or any kind of test, so, so we had to, in the, to be cautious about it, we had a boil water notice that with DEP, and Josh did the deed, he made it work.
So, on the boil water notice, the outstanding items that DEP asked for were updated bacteriological tests on the tank and on the line piping. That just came in my email, just went to DEP, so that items off the list. Beyond that was odor, which was sulfur, alkaline interventive, which doesn't mean anything to anyone, but that had to be sent to a lab down south, that was mailed out last Friday, it's a five day turnaround, so the expectations in the next day or two, we provide that, DEP did comment back, they originally requested a well permit, but we explained to them that this was done under emergency order, so they have waived all of that, so once these are provided, those tests clear, we should be able to take the boil water notice away, so my expectation is that we have all that information in the DEP before the end of the week. I can't guarantee their response turnaround, but we'll be on it to try to press it for this week.
And that doesn't solve all the problems, because I think it was Thursday was a week ago, and I think Don has met with Jim, and we were straight on buying water from the city, we, it helps on the Jones Homestead end, but we had two simultaneous breaks. We had one in Simmons Bio, at the same time, we had somebody valve up a fire hydrant at the end of secluded, and so it was a disaster, and of course, we had to have a boil water notice for that, but we didn't have our stuff ready with the city, which I think we do now, where we can turn, we don't like to have to buy water from the city, because we can sell it cheaper than we can buy it, but we will turn it on to keep pressure on this very southern extremity of the, of the deal, when we can cut it off from the tank, but again, it's kinda hard to fight fire when you've got two breaks on either end of your system, but that was the, initial boil water notice was because of those two breaks.
The other thing I had is, some people were wondering about, everybody's not on the internet, everybody's not on Facebook, but I think Jay and him used to use a phone alert system, you know, to notify people, and just wondered if we could look into that, you know?
Again, we can, we've got one too, we just need to narrow it down, again, because there's so much overlap, but the county's got the, I don't know if it's Alert One or Red Alert, the city's got one too, but, you know, it's a little bit more narrative, but they still have to sign up for that system, so we can put that on the water bill the next time we bill, to get them to sign up.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
Please, Don, Josh, thank you for your services, and what all you've done, as you stated, we do have a few bugs still to work out, but what's gonna be so great against, about all this, I see my good friend Butch said back there, we're gonna be able to supply quality water, a good quantity of water, good pressure, at a good, fair price, people can afford to buy the water, to hook up with it, but that's been the whole thing out on the Cape area, is this time of the day, they're running out of water, well, we're gonna, hopefully we've got this thing turned around, and it'll be good for the future, and when we get this other phase hooked in here at White City, to tie all in, I don't see us having any more water problems from the, anywhere in the south end of the county down here, we can get good water, but Butch, I hope you go home tonight, turn your shower on, you can take a good hot shower, and when you get your bill at the end of the month, you know, you can, it'll be fair and reasonable, that's what we maintain, we're not in it to gouge anybody, we're in it to provide a good service by residents in the Cape area and the Indian Pass and the Jones Homestead area. But Don, again, thank you and Josh for all you've worked on this, and we've got some whales that'll do it. When you put these booster pumps in, it'll send, you should have 50 pounds of pressure out at the State Park.
Yep.
You should, and that's great, that's what it's all about. All right, thank you, Mr. Chairman, and I just want to echo those words.
All right, any more questions from Mr. Butler? You got something?
See, just one last thing, Don come out of retirement, and he started out, he was gonna work 10 hours a week, and then he's gonna work 20 hours a week, and he's still only getting paid for 20 hours a week, but about the last six weeks, he's worked about 40, 45 hours a week, so my deal with Warren is, I'd only let him retire if he got Don to come back to work, but Don is doing a great service, and he got patience that I still haven't learned, because I'd have lost my mind two or three times in the last couple weeks with things that, that Don just smiles and goes on, but we appreciate you, because again, somebody, you know, our lifeblood right now is tourism, and somebody rents a place for 8,000 in secluded dunes and can't flush the toilet, that's a major problem for everybody, and it gives us a black eye, so we're not gonna have the pressure problems on normal days now, we're gonna have plenty of water, and should have plenty of pressure, barring some idiot running over a fire hydrant, and then that always causes a problem, but thank you, Don.
Yeah, and it's gonna get better.
Yeah, it's gonna get better. The good thing about on the far end, we can blow the toilets off the wall on the far end, we can dial it up, whatever, we can dial that pressure up to whatever we need to dial it up to on the other end.
Yeah, there, that's it.
You're good. All right, hold on, fix, save it before you go, come on up, Dr. Hart.
I want to see those toilets blow, it's the first time, Pat Harden and Coastal Community Association, just a real quick one, on the boil water notice, right now, we're still on boil water, for everybody that was on the Lighthouse Utilities, okay. We need to get that information back out, people are calling me all over, when, how will we know when the boil order notice is removed? When, how will we know that?
We sent out a press release, and we put it on the website, so, and it gets reported, sometimes it gets reported wrong, but it gets reported on the, on the deal. Now, what Commissioner Macron's asked, is if we get everybody signed up on the, on the call system through, and again, our problem's gonna be, we're gonna have to tie that bill to our system, because right now, we've got 3,000 people to get that call, well, there's not 3,000 residents on that system, I mean, it's all over the county, so we've gotta isolate that. So we will update that system, again, but it's gonna take an individual person, when they get their water bill, to sign up for that, so we can do that through a OC.
That would be helpful, if we could get the information to the fire department, for them to get on their website and get out the information, and we will also, Coastal Community Association, will get it out when the boil water's lifted, and that gets to a lot of people, if y'all can, we can do that, and a word of mouth helps. But I got caught up in you boil water, but, but it was the ice, and I wasn't in adult drink, and I put my ice, and that was my problem, so I've had problems. Thank you.
All right, thank you, ma'am. All right, Mr. Hammond?
Item E, Jeremy has guided, and this is just authorization to move forward, I guess.
Commissioners, Jim, I don't see, Jim's back here, he's been working with Michael and I, our tax abatement ordinance sunsetted, and with the growth in economic development that Jim's working on, he asked that you would consider that additional tool to offer to bring new business here, or expand current businesses, and we've had discussions with each of you individually, so I need your authorization to advertise a public hearing, two public hearings, one for the end of this month, and one again for May, to consider a new tax abatement ordinance, which would provide relief to new businesses that moved here from their ad valorem taxes up to 10 years, subsequent, with another vote through a resolution on their application, but I need that authorization for a public hearing.
All right, thank you, sir. Questions, commissioners, concerns? All right, if not, then I entertain a motion.
Motion, Mr. Chairman?
Motion by Commissioner Macron?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farrell, any further board discussion on this? And one in the audience, and one in the audience on this, and one in the audience, all right, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed, five and oh.
And Mr. Chairman, just an update, and I don't really want to get into weeds, but I want Jim to come up, if you would, and give us a quick update without any numbers on the dialysis deal. Commissioner Macron made contact with me a couple of months ago, when this, when DeVita was pulling out, and Jim has been working with another company, and we've come up with a potential subsidizing plan that we're not gonna talk about today, we'll talk about at your next meeting, but to try to save this dialysis program, because it's so critical to the folks that are sacred, you know, can't afford to go, and they have to ride the bus, and they be over there 12 hours, you know, three times a week, so can you give them an update?
Yeah, just a quick update, the Vice President in charge of development for Fresnius, which is really the only other major dialysis provider in this region, he did his due diligence, he took his plan to the Board of Governors, whoever approves their things for them, anyways, it was, they considered it today, and I, and news that you don't know, that yesterday in discussions, we found out that Sacred Heart may want to help us, so I relayed that information to him, and I just got a text from a few minutes ago, we just need some details, but we have one idea how the county might help them, if we can get Sacred Heart on board, that may be enough to do it. I mean, folks, you know, as you know, we spent $35,000 10 years ago subsidizing the transportation of patients from Gulf County to get their dialysis, and that was like a 10 and 12 hour trip in some instances for people, and we gotta find a way, but there is only two providers, and one has pulled out, because they lost their Blue Cross contract, the other one, thank goodness, Fresnius still has theirs in play. So, we're moving forward, we don't have an answer, but yes, there's been positive developments in that they're still looking at it, and now we're gonna try, have some discussions, get the hospital on board in terms of a joint proposal, so that's where we stand on that.
All right, any questions for, excuse me, Mr. Jim?
It's good news, Jim.
Yeah, yeah. Do we, can I hit him up on the, okay, I got one other thing, the, we need, we need a letter of support from the commission to encourage DOT to allow a full access for, to enter the Burger King and Wee Wee Hitchcock, they only give a write-in, write-out, obviously you and I know the traffic runs just as much north and south, and we just need a, they need a letter of support to encourage them to allow a full access to turn in and turn out at that location, and I drafted a letter for that effect, but would ask that you approve that, and with the approval that the chairman could sign the letter.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions on this, commissioners? Questions, concerns? All right, if the bin, now then, I entertain a motion that we send a letter of support to DOT.
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich?
Second.
You second that, Mr. McDaniel?
Yes, sir.
Second by Commissioner McDaniel, any further discussion on this issue? Anyone in the public on this, anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed, five and oh.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, sir.
He's got the next several.
Item F on your agenda, readvertise the HHRP Management Services, that's to manage that round the money that was, we rejected the bids, we received a couple meetings ago, so we just want to go back out for advertising for that, we need your permission.
All right, questions, commissioners on this? HHRP Management Services. All right, entertain a motion that we go back out, readvertise it.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner McDaniel?
Second.
Second by Commissioner Macron, any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed 5-0.
To your packet, we'll just start page one, asking permission to advertise for an R F Q for, to replace the irrigation in the golf course.
Questions, concerns on this? All right, entertain a motion then, move forward.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience, anyone in the audience? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed 5-0.
Page two in the packet, request permission that the board approve the revision of task order with M R D Associates for the engineering design and permitting of the erosion control breakwaters. It, D E P reviewed that and requested some scope changes. It's no dollar amount change, it's just some scope changes. Ask for your approval for that.
All right, questions, concerns on this, commissioners? All right, being, entertaining a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farrell. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience on this issue? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed 5-0.
Page three, request to amend M R D's continuing service contract. That was based on FEMA and D E M's review. They wanted some language changes. So again, this is their continuing service contract, so it's no dollar amount changes. It's just some wording changes and to make that contingent upon the county attorney's review.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions, concerns, commissioners on that? If they're being, entertaining a motion?
Motion to approve and chairman to sign.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the public on this issue? Any opposition to that motion? Motion passed 5-0.
Page four, asking for approval to, for the chairman to sign a site access license agreement with Water Management District. This is for the well site in White City. They sent that document over, attorneys reviewed it. So we're just ready to sign it.
All right, any questions, concerns on this issue? All right, entertain a motion.
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience on this issue? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed 5-0.
Page five is in relation to the floating dry dock. Obviously, for that to work off the seawall, that area needs to be dredged and disposed of. That needs to be, that part of it needs to be designed and permitted. And so we request approval to approve a task order at Duverie to handle that. It'll be paid out of the J P A, the D O T grant for that site. It'll be covered under that.
All right, thank you, sir. Any questions on this, commissioners? If they're being, entertaining a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Rich.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this issue? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public on this issue? Any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed 5-0.
Page six, the bridge work for 38 Bridge, we rejected the bid that came in a couple of meetings ago. It was way out of budget. Duverie has revised that scope of work and they're finalizing that. So we need your permission to readvertise that project.
Questions, concerns on this? If they're being, then I entertain a motion?
So moved. Second.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public? Any, any opposition to that motion? All right, motion passed 5-0.
Page seven, asking permission to apply for the second congressional district community project funding for this fiscal year. Need your approval to make application for that, those funds.
And on this, we're going to want a little discussion.
Okay.
Because you get to choose these projects, but we're going to, typical federal government deal. We got this notice last Friday afternoon and the application's due on the 15th. So our lobbyist has been working Mr. Sullen back and forth and he had a meeting with Don's office yesterday afternoon. They were going to try to get me some parameters today. We don't know what the minimum and maximum are. I've got three potential applications, but we need some input because we're going to have to turn this around pretty quick. So we've already asked for, watched it, Jim, with C D B G D R. I would say let's throw that in again. It would rank high on most of these. This is the old for the public's information, for good or bad. This is what used to be called earmarks that have now been brought back. So I'm not necessarily for earmarks, but if they're given money everywhere else, we need to get our fair share. So my other two would be floating dry dock or something tied to the port or eastern. And the third one would be some engineering or site work at the proposed airport site that we have with St. Joe. So those would be the three that I would say that depending on what the parameters are that we would request. And we're all ears if you have some other potentials that we can turn around in 48 hours.
Questions, concerns, commissioners?
Do you have an idea of the minimum or maximum?
We're waiting for it to get that number. So again, I don't want to ask for 10 million when the maximum's 500,000. But in the past, the last thing I remember getting funded through an earmark, Alan Boyd was the congressman and he got a weight room for St. Joe and Weewall type deal. And I think it was about $750,000 total. So that's what I'm leaning toward until I hear something different.
You good? Y'all good? Oh, I'm good with those projects. Y'all good with those, those three projects?
Okay, so if we could get you to approve the application process and staff will work depending on what the feedback is from our lobbyist and turn them in before the end of the week.
Okay.
You got a short period.
Yeah.
It never fails.
Get it done. All right, any questions, concerns? All right, I understand a motion, we move forward.
So moved.
Motion by Commissioner McDaniel, second by Commissioner Farrell. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition to the motion? All right, motion passes 5-0.
Page eight, asking you to ratify the grant that was submitted to NIFWIF for some money to help with the construction of the breakwaters on Cape San Blas.
Questions, concerns, commissioners on this? All right, if they're being, then I entertain a motion?
So moved, Mr. Chairman.
All right, motion by Commissioner McCrone.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Farrell. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the audience? Anyone in the audience? Any opposition? All right, motion passed 5-0.
That was it for me.
If I could get Clay to give us an update on the renourishment while we're talking, please, real quick.
There's about a little over 50,000 cubic yards of sand that have been hauled to the beach. The pit is working doubly hard to try to get more sand out, get it up on the hill. So we've not hauled last week and really till the end of last week with the weather, it didn't hurt us any, but not hauled any this week. But we hope to get back after it, you know, pretty quick. As soon as we get a quantity of sand on the hill that makes it worthwhile to have 20 trucks coming and getting it.
I understand.
We're always behind, commissioner. Never enough. My first item, I need permission. We've been going back and forth with St. Joe Company for a pretty good bit of time. I need permission to execute and I've already negotiated, so it says negotiate and execute, to execute a contract to buy the property around the 5-point landfill.
All right, any questions, concerns on this, commissioners? You say you already had a talk with St. Joe Company, come up with us, it worked out, so, okay. Any question, concerns? All right, if they're being, then I entertain a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner Rich. Any further board discussion on this? Anyone in the public on this? Anyone in the public? Any opposition? All right, motion passed 5-0.
I was wrong about this one too. We do the inspections for the city of Weewell Hitchcock, for their building inspections. And our latest contract does not include waiving the fees for city buildings. The city's fire station was destroyed during the hurricane and they are replacing it. My recommendation, we waive the fee for the city, or excuse me, city of Weewell Hitchcock to, for their building permit for the fire department. And that's on page nine.
Got you. Any questions, concerns on this, commissioners, to waive in that fee? If they're being, then I entertain a motion?
So moved.
All right, motion by Commissioner Farrell.
Second.
Second by Commissioner McCrone. Any further board discussion? Anyone in the audience on this? Anyone in the audience? Waiving fees, waiving this fee. Any opposition? All right, motion passed 5-0.
We have a budget meeting, where's Sherry? 22nd. This is the only one where you all can attend. Commissioner McDaniel is the chairman of the budget committee, but this will be an advertised meeting for the constitutional officers. It's typically the only one we have that is an advertised meeting. So since it is, all five commissioners or any of you can attend because it will be recorded and a full meeting. We need a little direction. It's my recommendation that we allow the constitutional officer to plug in 3% across the board, cost of living raise this time. And we need some direction on recommendations for any increases.
Any increases?
To their overall budget. You know, we've been pretty strapped for the last couple of years because Hurricane Michael and then we had a freeze. We had to take back and they give back and whatnot. But again, there's probably going to need, don't get too carried away, Sheriff, some adjustments in the overall lines because we have kept everybody pretty tight for the last three years because we had to be tight. And again, everything goes up. And so I need to get the gist of the board where we can get a letter out to the constitutional officers and to the department heads.
All right, questions, concerns, commissioners? I think it would be, like I say, it would be great if we can, if those employees can look forward to their 3%. You know what I'm saying? That would definitely be, would be great with the, with the things that we've been through. You know what I'm saying? And I commend the county, I mean, staff and they've been doing a great job. Like I say, holding the line. But while we've been going through Hurricane Michael and we went through COVID-19, we're still going through COVID. You know what I'm saying? We've been able to, saying, give those, those people that's been here, you know what I'm saying, working hard, give them raises. So I think it'd be great to, to give them that 3%. Now, with the other issue on, are we going to hold the line? Are we going to increase the budget? You want some direction on that?
Well, you've already given me direction to cut the village and I'm planning on leaning towards that. But I do think that it's only fair that for the constitutional officers to, I would say, 2.5% overall increase, no more than 2.5% overall increase, notwithstanding the set aside. For most of them, the salaries are the biggest part of their budget. So, but everything goes up, paper, computers, everything goes up. And we've held them pretty tight for the last three years because we had to. So I would recommend that 3% cost of living raise for their employees and 2.5%, no more than 2.5% across the board for the rest of the budget.
Questions, concerns, commissioners?
And this is just direction, they can ask for whatever they want. But at the end of the day, that's, I do think there needs to be some bump in some of these budgets that have really been static for the last three years.
Got you. All right, questions, concerns on this, commissioners?
Mr. Chairman?
Yes, sir.
We will, at the budget meeting, we'll look at the numbers. That's what it's all about. Bottom line, we'll see where we go, what's been requested. We'll see what, when we get to the property appraiser, what we've got to work with and we'll go from there.
Okay.
Let's get some, get some numbers.
Okay.
And we'll know which way to go. All right, that's all, thank you.
All right.
So if that's, if it's good just to hold off on the overall, but to include the 3%, is that okay?
Yeah, I'm fine.
For the pay rate?
I'm fine with that.
Yeah. Okay. We'll draft that letter and Commissioner McDaniel will sign that as the chairman of the committee. Great news, last week, it was short-lived because of other crises, but we got our FEMA waiver, which is about $3 million to us.